Good evening, everyone. I hereby call to order the Stanley County Board of Education meeting for March 4th, 2025 to order. I'd like to welcome those of you who are present here tonight and those who are also joining us via live stream. Your participation is vital as we work together to enhance Stanley County schools. Next on our agenda is approval of the agenda, so entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Move to approve as presented.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we will have our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Ms. Almond.
Heavenly Father, we just come to you tonight asking for wisdom and guidance as we carry out decisions for Stanley County. Father, I thank you for the families. I thank you for the kids. I thank you for what you're doing in their lives and in our lives. Father, I just ask that you continue to guide us, direct us. Lord, help us to walk with integrity, and we thank you for everything that you're doing. In Jesus' name, amen.
We're going to start with the Stanley Stars. Ms. Lydia Hedrick.
Good evening. This evening, we have several staff members from across the district to recognize. Each month, certain schools are able to nominate a certified staff member and a classified staff member to get the Stanley Star Certificate of Appreciation. And so this evening, I would like to begin with Mr. Levi Efferd from North Stanley Middle School. Mr. Efferd, if you'll join us up front. And Mr. Efferd, I'm going to have you stand here for a little while while we read some things about you and then ask you to stay while your colleagues come up as well. So Levi Efferd is a sixth grade social studies teacher who has been very intentional about including engagement strategies in his daily instruction. He helps support his grade level with avid strategy implementation and also taught a double set of classes during the first semester when we had a vacancy for a social studies teacher to ensure that every sixth grader received quality instruction from a certified teacher. Mr. Efferd also serves on the school improvement team and avid teams at North Stanley Middle School, and he has been serving our school and community for 14 years. We are thrilled to recognize him this evening as one of our Stanley Stars. Please give him a round of applause. We would also like to recognize this evening Ms. Rita Simpson from North Stanley Middle School. I don't believe that she was able to join us, but she is a dedicated child nutrition assistant manager. She has a constant smiling face in the building, and when she isn't busy preparing meals for the students, she's running around helping to solve any problems that may come up, ringing in orders and serving meals with a smile. Her consistent positivity is one of the things that makes the North Stanley Middle School cafeteria such a wonderful place for our students and staff. She has served North Stanley Middle School for nine years, and we are thankful for each one of those nine. This evening, from Locust Elementary, I would like to invite Amanda Summers to join Ms. Summers is a veteran teacher who has taught at Locust for many years. She has a love of teaching and students. She makes math interesting and helps learning come alive. Mrs. Summers is patient, kind, and dynamic in her teaching. She knows her students' data and tailors her lessons to narrow their achievement gaps. Mrs. Summers always has a fun, excellent activity to go along with the lesson. Her end-of-grade scores are consistently at the top of the district in third grade math, which is indicative of the tremendous amount of student learning happening in her classroom. We are very lucky to have Ms. Summers at Locust. Please give her a round of applause. I practiced this next last name, and I hope I get it right. Megan Kessigich. I did guess. She trained me the other day. Ms. Kessigich is one of the best teacher assistants at Locust. It does not matter what grade level she helps with. Everyone wants Ms. Kessigich as their teacher assistant. Her small group instruction is excellent, but she also drives buses and helps transport the students on field trips or home. Currently, along with guidance from her teachers, she teaches social studies and does reading and math interventions for a fifth grade classroom of 26 students. Ms. Kessigich is studying to be a teacher and will be an excellent addition to any school in Stanley County. Please give her a round of applause. If Erin Moorhead will please join us at the front. Ms. Moorhead is a fourth grade teacher at Central Elementary, and she is a teacher leader that leads by example. As a mentor to beginning teachers, she navigates the complex nature of this responsibility seamlessly. She is compassionate yet firm, demonstrating a high level of competency in all areas fundamental for students to be successful: behavior management, setting age-appropriate expectations and procedures, knowledge and presentation of content, and awareness-understanding of the needs of each student. Her classroom presents a rich and stimulating learning environment that emphasizes rigor through conversation, collaboration, and independent work opportunities. She is an excellent communicator that develops meaningful relationships with her students through active listening, which validates students' thoughts and opinions, allowing them to feel safe and to take risks with their own learning. Ms. Moorhead's classroom performance data, whether looking at student growth or overall proficiency, consistently yields significantly high results. The overwhelming majority of her students exceed growth expectations year over year. Her commitment and dedication to her students and Central Elementary are appreciated beyond words. Please give her a round of applause. And last, but certainly not least, I would like to invite Niren Pringle to join us up Mr. Pringle is the type of educator that we look to in order to challenge ourselves to be better educators and people. He has filled many different shoes this year, showing up and serving as a positive light for everyone who interacts with him. Mr. Pringle has a tremendous work ethic, highlighted by his willingness to serve in any capacity needed for our students and our staff. He takes every responsibility to heart, completing everything thoroughly and with fidelity for the students' benefit. No matter the ask, Mr. Pringle always has a smile on his face and a positive attitude, both of which are infectious for students and colleagues. When coverage needs arise in any number of our EC positions, Mr. Pringle is THE, and
Mr. Plummer and Dr. Dennis will be presenting those.
Thank you.
that's in all capitals, go-to person for stepping in and providing consistency for
I'd like Mr. Plummer to come up. Tonight, we're going to recognize our schools that achieved academic growth for the 23-24
students needing intensive support. When not being pulled every which way, Mr. Pringle supports students in various grade
school year. And I'll go ahead and say our first one is going to be Albemarle High School, but unfortunately,
levels throughout the building and small group interventions.
they have a third-round playoff game today, so their administration couldn't come.
Central Elementary and Stanley County is extremely lucky and grateful for all that
But then I'll let you take everybody.
Mr. Pringle brings to the table and his willingness to do anything for our students.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, like Dr. Dennis said, we're excited to recognize our schools, those
Thank you for setting a great example. Please give him a round of applause.
that are with us tonight, and the students, the teachers, the communities, families that are at home celebrating with us as well.
I think we're going to do a group photo, and then I know the board wants to shake
So first up, our group of schools who met their academic growth for the 2023-2024 school
y'all's hands and thank you for the work you do. So if y'all will turn around, and they're going to lean down and just walk right across.
year. Albemarle High School is not with us tonight. After Albemarle, Millingport Elementary School.
Norwood Elementary School. Our next group will be our schools who exceeded academic growth for the 2023-2024 school year, starting with Aquadale Elementary School.
Thank you so much to those of you that were just recognized. The banners made it a little difficult tonight to be able to come through and shake the board's hand, but please know that we are so very appreciative of everything that you and your staff do for your school and your students each and every day.
It's really exciting, and just think should be said too, that 17 of our 22 schools met or exceeded growth this past academic year. All right, so moving on, I want to recognize the North Carolina School Board Association Academy of Sports, or Schools Boardsmanship, excuse me. And we'll read a little something, and I want to call some people up for recognition. Through the North Carolina School Board Association Academy for School Boardsmanship, school board members are provided with high-quality training programs to help them effectively fulfill their responsibilities as leaders of public education in North Carolina. In addition, the program requires opportunities for school board members to meet the requirement of General Statute 115(c)(50) mandating 12 o'clock hours of training every two years. Recognition is awarded to individuals who participated in a minimum of 30 hours of training during the current academy year, which runs from July 1 through July 30. And I would like to recognize some individuals. The first I would like to recognize is Ms. Glenda Gibson. Next, I would like to recognize Mr. Rufus Lefler. Again, thank you on your achievements, and that's all for tonight.
Congratulations to those of you who were recognized. These hours of training are hours that they do over and above the time that is spent with other things that go on on this board. So thank you so much to the four of you that were recognized. Next on our agenda is closed session. We need to approve to go into closed session to discuss personnel matters under North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11a6; student matters under North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11a1; and attorney-client matters under North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11a3. Do we have a motion? We go into closed session?
We go into closed session.
Do I have a second? All in favor? All opposed?
Nay. Madam Chair, I would like to make a move to do amend the meeting again. I would have done it at the beginning, but I just found out that there is one name on the list, and I move public comments to before closed session.
So we have a motion on the floor to move public comments before the closed session. All those in favor? Okay, do I have a second? Ms. Swanson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, so motion fails. Are we okay, Mr. Louter, with the motion and everything to go into closed session?
Yeah.
Because we actually took that vote, so we're good. Okay, we'll consider ourselves in closed session.
Congratulations to those of you who were recognized. These hours of training are hours that they do over and above the time that is spent with other things that go on on this board, so thank you so much to the four of you that were recognized. Next on our agenda is closed session. We need to approve to go into closed session to discuss personnel matters under North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11a6, student matters under North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11a1, and attorney-client matters under North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11a3. Do we have a motion we go in closed session?
We go into closed session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Nay. Madam Chair, I would like to make a move to do amend the meeting again. I would have done it at the beginning, but I just found out that there is one name on the list, and I move public comments to before closed session.
Are we making a motion? I think we voted.
So, Mr. Louder, are we able to do, to make a motion?
You are. After the agenda has been adopted, however, it requires a two-thirds vote.
Okay, so I would like to move to amend the agenda to put public comments before closed session.
So we have a motion on the floor to move public comments before the closed session. All those in favor? Okay, do I have a second? Mr. Swanson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion fails. Are we okay, Mr. Louder, with the motion and everything to go into closed session? Because we actually took that vote, so we're good. Okay, we'll consider ourselves in closed session.
Public participation in board meetings. In accordance with Policy 2310, public participation at board meetings each month will be a part of at least one regularly scheduled board meeting, and that will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments, however, the public comment session will not exceed 15 minutes total except by a majority vote of the board. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. We have one person who has signed up to speak tonight, Susan Dykes. I hope that I have pronounced that correctly.
You did. Okay. So about the move to ENDE, looking at the two maps, my concerns are mostly with the fact of busing, which we're going to have to do a better job. We're not going to be able to hear, we just don't have busing. You're asking these people to go past two elementary schools to another school. Our kids are going to be on a bus almost two hours. We're going to need a bus. Second of all, when you're looking at your plans, the line where you want to pick, the one to where you grab all those kids and put them to ENDE, that's just not fair. That's not even feasible because then you're going to make ENDE overflowed and these kids sacrificed. And I understand we're all going to be close to being overflowed anyway, but to start ENDE out pulling those kids from an overflowed school to another school just wouldn't be fair to them. And they deserved a music room, they deserve an art room as well. They've been sacrificing all this time too. So that's all I have to say. I appreciate everything. I'm kind of looking forward to it. I appreciate everything you're doing. I just want my kids to be in a good classroom with good teachers, which I think they are, and to be able to, like you said, take some of that pressure off the teachers because they deserve it. Other than that, good luck because it doesn't seem easy. And then the other thing is the EC students, which I know that we've addressed and that you guys are already on that, and I really appreciate that too because we have parents out here that some kids would be affected, their education would be affected because of their special needs. And other than that, I appreciate everything you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dykes. Next on our agenda is a presentation from Ms. Lydia Hedrick and Human Resources Department.
Around January, mid-January, we were put in connection with a community resource through one of our board members, Mrs. Gibson. The goal of the North Carolina Community Resource Center is to help us, the employer, support the well-being of our workforce. So we also have the added advantage, being a school system, of sharing that support with all of the families that we serve as well. So this resource, as we learned about it and really dug into it with the company that's offering it, we learned it's not just for our employees, but it's going to benefit the whole community. So why it matters? The North Carolina Community Resource Center has statistics that show that 44% of households struggle to afford basic necessities, things like food, housing, clothing, medical care. And 70% of people who struggle with substance abuse disorders are employed. So there are lots of needs within our community that can be met through this North Carolina Community Resource Center. You have a live link on the first slide that you have available to you if you want to check it out yourself. But the benefits of this to us are it's free, so it does not cost the district anything at all. We actually had a free version of this already on our website. So it was previously called Find Help, and if you go to the Stanley County Schools website right now, it's listed under Community Resources. It has altered to North Carolina Community Resource Center because they now have grant funding that allows them to track some analytics. It's still completely confidential for anybody that takes advantage, but the benefits of tracking the analytics are they can curate the platform to be specific to our staff and to our families that are accessing it. So if there's a link that's clicked on regularly, they can promote that on the website, or they could also share the analytics with the state, which may in turn get us some community help through additional funds, which would be a nice benefit. The Resource Center is also anonymous, so any information that's shared with a third party is only after the explicit approval of the individual that's taking advantage of those services. Until that permission is given, their information is never shared. So you can look on that website, shop around. For the past six weeks, I've been on it multiple times, and nobody's reached out to me, so they don't capture your information at all. It will connect our employees and the families that we serve with local resources that are important, things for food, housing, transportation needs, clothing, mental health, substance abuse, and more. It also works well on a cell phone. They've put this website together knowing that not everyone has a computer or a laptop at home, but almost everyone has a cell phone available to them. And then a great advantage for us is that users can select their preferred language, and then the programs that they reach out to are notified of that preferred language. There are over 150 languages listed on the website. We also have ways that we can share the Community Resource Center. So three ways to share are we can print the program information, we can share the program information via email, text, or through Facebook, so it's social media friendly. And if we share it with someone, we can put in their language and it will go to them, it pushes out in their language. So this is going to be a great benefit to our translator in the district. And it also directly connects people with the program using the Connect button, so we can send them straight to it. North Carolina Community Resource Center is going to be providing us posters for all of our schools. That is free of cost to us. They're also providing us with business cards so that we can hand them to folks that may benefit from the services that they offer. The business card has a QR code that they can scan with their cell phone, and it will link them directly to the resource. I wanted to share with you all our timeline for rolling this out. We did share it last week with Cabinet, it's shared this evening with you all, I've shared it with the HR department. Thursday of this week, it will be shared at the principals' meeting. Tuesday of the following week, it will be shared with all assistant principals. And then we'll do the official rollout March 19th, it will be shared in the district newsletter, the website, social media, all posters will go up, so we're going to do a blast essentially so that you can't go anywhere in Stanley County Schools without seeing this information. But the real impact is going to come from our staff that will share this information with one another and with the families that we serve. So you will see on this last slide, there are two training dates. One in February has already passed, and many of our principals, I've heard from them that they attended already. We also have one coming up in March, but we required all school administrators, so principals and assistant principals, school counselors, school social workers, school nurses, and data managers have all been invited to participate in that training session because they're who's going to most commonly interact with staff that have a need and also with parents or students that have a need. So they'll all be well-versed in this resource, and they'll know what is available and how it can support the families. Do y'all have any questions about the North Carolina Community Resource Center? We're just, we're excited to partner with them.
Yeah, I just have a comment to make. Of course, I know that the person reached out, you know, to me, and I can just see how needed. It's beneficial, but it's needed. Sometimes I don't think we realize what our staff could be facing, anything with their needs, as well as, you know, children or anyone else in that community. But I really do think about it with our personnel, our staff. So I'm thankful that you put everything together. I'm thankful for the training that, you know, is being done. I also have been in contact with other surrounding school systems that are getting on board with this as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all very much.
We appreciate you bringing that to us, Ms. Gibson. Sounds like that's definitely going to be beneficial to our system. Next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. I've entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda as is presented. That will include the February 4th, 2025, and February 13th, 2025, special called Community Information Meeting that we held.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Next on our agenda is the ENDE realignment action.
I would like to ensure a smooth transition for our families that maintains balanced capacity at our school buildings and effective utilization of our resources. I move that our board approve Option 1 for the realignment of ENDE Elementary School, inclusive of the existing transfers built into the planned projections and as recommended by the demographer Numerex. Additionally, all rising fifth graders currently enrolled at Locust and Stanfield, including their currently enrolled siblings, have the option to remain at their current school.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Yes.
Ms. Poplin?
Um, I'd just like to say with the inclusion of the students that we're keeping, I don't want to, for fear of getting it wrong, I don't want to repeat exactly what you said, but the students and their siblings at those two schools, correct? The grandfather?
Yes. Transfers are built into the plan and to Option 1, additionally to the rising fifth graders, which are plus their siblings.
Okay. Do we not?
Siblings currently enrolled in this school.
No siblings. This gets complicated if you hadn't figured that out yet. Okay, so with that said, do we know what the percentage is for those, like the capacity percentages, are those the ones that we saw yesterday?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be the 95 and the 95 and the 89.
That's correct. That's the first one. The second one was what our speaker referenced.
Right. Okay. With that said, I just want to state that moving 160 kids to end up almost right back where we are right now, I don't see how that's super beneficial. I know we have something we need to do, and I understand that we're vastly approaching capacities, but with just hearing a second option yesterday and not knowing what other options could be explored, I feel like maybe a motion to delay or a motion to see other options at this point in time because for me, those numbers don't seem to be providing a whole lot of relief.
Until there's new capacity in the Western End via new construction renovations and additions, this is going to continue to be an issue. So, you know, according to the demographer, I'm looking at a lot of different scenarios and discussing that, that was the best option, Option 1, per his recommendation.
The best option is the options that have been presented?
As a demographer who does this for a living, that has a forecast within plus or minus 1%.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I have a question. So just to be clear, so with these children that we would be grandfathering in, that wasn't really a part of the Option 1 that Mr. Miller presented, so if we grand- So if we grandfather in, then kind of what Carla's saying, I mean, it's not going to change our numbers on what we're trying to accomplish.
You still come under capacity on the total projection. So if we look at the numbers that he presented, that's 474 at Locust. You have about 437 on his projection at Stanfield. So that puts those schools at 95% capacity. And I believe the Indy School in that was 89 or 90% capacity. It was previously overcapacity three years ago, which sparked this conversation amongst the board on what to do. When you look at the redistricting numbers and you look for Locust, and we look at the rising 5th graders, you have, and you look at 4th and 5th graders because that has came up with the public before in the questions and part of the community meetings, they sent questions in about, there's 19 at Locust, rising 5th graders, and there's, that could be grandfathered in the motion, and there's 13 at Stanfield. Those include, the 19 at Locust includes four siblings currently enrolled at the school. So you have, and four employees' children. So you're really discussing only 15 children, 11 students plus the four siblings out of the 5th grade at Locust. The four employees by Policy 4150 that are currently at the school have the option, the ability under policy to remain at that school. So we're talking about maintaining 15 students at Locust and 13 students additional at Stanfield. So that's 28 total students between the two schools.
And that's without addressing the transfer policy or Policy 4150? That's just as it stands right now, correct?
This is all following the policy?
Right.
4150?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I think what it shows me, I like, well, I like the motion because I feel like it shows that this board has heard the community. We did. We heard people, you know, who ask about the grandfathering. And it seems like that we are looking at what, who can we grandfather? We know we cannot grandfather 4th and 5th. We know that. The demographer even pointed things out. But it looks like with the numbers that we can grandfather in those 5th graders. And to me, it shows again that, you know, a lot of questions came from the community about that. And what?
We also had speakers that?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
The board, the committee has taken into consideration the data, has listened to the community, has looked at all points that we possibly could look at, have crunched the numbers, are relying on the projection by the demographer coming in at plus or minus 1%. So if he's misses by 1%, then he's up, you know, that's five students. If he's overprojected by 1%, that's, you know, five less students at the school. But to your point, there was no way to get under capacity using the projection, using, following Policy 4150 where employees have the ability to keep their kids at the school and pulling them out either via the transfer list or via the potential grandfathering. And so we, that total number by taking the 5th grade at Locust and Stanfield would, on the projection, on the numbers, on what we know, would keep us under capacity for next year. Now, again, that's a demographer's projection, so it could be plus or minus from that. I highly doubt it's exact, but over the last couple of years, he's been fairly accurate in the projection. That's what the board asked him to do.
Yeah, I'm not against doing it. It's the next year part of it that worries me. And I just wanted to say that. It's in the interim, and all the conversation yesterday during our work session revolved around if we get a grant, if the commissioners sign on, if we have enough money to build an elementary school. There's a lot of ifs in there. And in the small interim time between now and next year, if we have a few housing developments go up, we may be right back where we are right now.
I would fully expect it within three years that without new capacity, either by new construction, renovations, additions for the Western End, that we will. And I think the board is, at least I'll say my opinion as I understand it, is trying to affect the least amount of families as possible by keeping in mind the objective at hand.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted it to be stated that we're trying to relieve it. By doing this, we're getting there a little bit, but we're not, there was not as much movement as I had hoped that there would be with having to move, you know, displace 160 students. I don't know how many families that equates out to, but we know it's roughly around 160 students.
Is there anyone else that hasn't made any comments, have anything they would like to say?
Madam Chair, just for clarification, Ms. Poplin, did you make a motion inside the motion subsidiary or not?
No, I just had discussion.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to be on the record too, saying that I'm not against grandfathering. I want these children to stay where they are, especially their 5th grade year. It's very important not to move them before they go to middle school, which is a whole new territory. But I just wanted to be clear on that. I just want to make sure that all families are taken care of. And based off of what the demographer said with Option 1, I was taken aback and off guard because grandfathering did not seem the best idea yesterday during the work session when it was concluded. So that's why I wanted to ask that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure he actually stated he wouldn't include that because it would make those numbers go up. That's why I was asking, would those percentages not increase from the 95, 95, and 89?
I think what I really took yesterday, and I think we had a great work session, a lot of discussion. And I know that every single board member up here has pondered this over and over and worked the numbers in our, definitely we have. I think even our speaker said this tonight. The other option was, there was no choice at all. So you're not going to do an option that loads up Indy and fills it immediately with, you know, overcapacity at that school. And to go to what, to allude to or echo with what Mr. List has said, and you, Ms. Poplin, with the fact that we know that long-term, this is short-term. So we know that we have to proceed with, as we're doing with the needs-based grant, free money. We've got to do that, and we've got to look at the, as we've talked about, as has been presented, a school, a replacement school that can hold 600 to 700 students and take care of our problem out there. And then, as we've talked about, we are working toward that middle school addition. We are working toward high schools. So, I mean, yes, we're faced with this. But again, we're taking, you said it, little pieces, little steps, and we're doing the best that we can. And I just want to say for looking out in the audience that we have Ms. Altri out there from Indy. And I know that it's important to her. She's here. She is a part, you know, a part of this. And she is a great leader at that school. And she will take care of the children. She and her staff will take care of those children. And I applaud her. I commend her for being here as we discuss this.
I'd just like to say that, you know, this board, we are addressing overcrowding every day. It's not a, and we know that this is not a fix-all. We've all said that. I think we really undertook a comprehensive planning process when we started talking about Indy School and the realignment. We really started this process over two years ago when we started planning the addition at Indy. That addition is scheduled to be completed and open when school opens next year. It's on schedule as of right now, so we are headed in the right direction. We've had numerous meetings. We've had discussions beyond galore. We have our central office staff. Dr. Dennis's staff has worked diligently and hard gathering information for us. Even yesterday, we had a work session yesterday morning where we really focused on the realignment of Indy, Locust, and Stanfield. We're trying to really make sure that we are effectively utilizing that addition at Indy School. We've had community meetings. We've shared maps. I feel like this board has done their due diligence. You know, I appreciate that we've had a lot of discussion. Some of it we agree on, some of it we don't. But I know that once we take a vote, that this board will move forward and that our goal is to do what's in the best interest of our students and our school and our communities. I also just want to recognize Billy Mills, our county commissioner, who is here. They were instrumental in helping us be able to do that addition at Indy School. So, Mr. Mills, we appreciate your interest and your attendance in our meetings tonight.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to delay the vote on this tonight. We were given one option. We were given a second option yesterday that we had not seen prior to yesterday. So I would like to make a motion that we not get rid of the vote, but to delay the vote. I have the floor.
You have a motion on the table?
I know, and you can make a second motion.
You got to vote on the first motion.
Okay. No, I don't think so.
Yes, that's a vote.
Okay. So I have the floor. I'm making a motion to delay due to the fact that we just got a second option yesterday. We haven't really had a lot of time to digest that. There was only one option presented prior to that at the work session before that.
So I have a motion to delay by Ms. Poplin. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Point of order. Is the motion to delay for a certain period of time or indefinitely? Those are two separate motions.
Until more discussion can be had on the topic. So do I have to give it? No, not indefinitely, just? Um?
To a certain time, you have to?
Okay, until the next board meeting.
Motion on the floor to delay or to table?
I'd like to also point out that the, by policy, the transfer request deadline is March 15th. We cannot wait till the next board meeting.
Well, then?
Let's go ahead and take a vote on your motion. So you've made a motion to table it till the next board meeting, correct? Mark says you need to give a time.
Yes, till the next board meeting, which would be prior to March 15th.
Yeah, that would not be prior to March 15th.
Okay, sorry. Never mind. Yeah, till the next board meeting.
Okay, so a motion to table till the next board meeting. I had a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your hands, please. All opposed? And I'll vote of the opposed, so the motion passes, the motion fails. So we're going to go back to the original motion then, that Mr. List made. I'm going to restate that if you'll give me that copy. We did have a, he made the motion. We had a second on this, but I'm going to read the motion again, just so we're all on the same page. The motion is to approve Option 1 for the realignment of Indy Elementary School, inclusive of the existing transfers built into the planned projections as recommended by the demographer Numerex. Additionally, all rising 5th graders currently enrolled at Locust and Stanfield, including their currently enrolled siblings, have the option to remain at their current school. So we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? The chair votes in favor, so the motion passes.
Can I make one point of information just for a moment? I know that it was talked about EC, and I was just going to make a point that this particular decision's not really going to affect, if we were talking about separate setting EC programming, anything like that, for this year. I can't promise any individual stuff because, you know, that works on its own level within an individual student's IEP, but we don't expect any large shifts due to this decision.
Dr. Dennis, I would just like to make a comment. I really appreciate you and Mr. Pascal and your staff working hard to get that situated for those families. So thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Next on the agenda is, personally, it's Policy Committee. We only have one committee report this evening, and that'll be Ms. Almond with the policy.
Okay, so I'm going to read off the policies just like I did. Policies for approval. Policy 7810, Policy 7811, Policy 7815, Policy 7900, Policy 7910, Policy 7930, Policy 7940, and Policy 7950. So I need approval, or I need a second on that rather, right?
You don't need a second.
A second, just approval, okay.
Out of the committee, but that's, the motion will be to approve the adoption and rescission of the policies as presented.
You do need a second, just not a motion.
All right, so we need a second.
Second, second.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Those policies are approved. Next, Auxiliary Services. Mr. Duttony, you awake over there?
I'm awake.
Hope, does she need to do the rescinded list?
I believe I do need to do the rescinded because it's 30 days.
You have one more. I just know because I'm on that committee.
Well, the motion that I read had that included, yes.
Okay, sorry, just wanted to make sure.
If you want to read those out loud though, we'll go back.
I think for public record, yeah.
That's fine.
So Policies that Need to Be Rescinded is going to be Policy 5311, Policy 5331, Policy 5525, Policy 5360, Policy 5530, Policy 5210, Policy 5365, Policy 5535, and Policy 5364. I do not need a second on that, correct? Because we, okay.
That was actually included in the other motion, so thank you, Ms. Almond. Okay, Mr. Duttony, Audit Account Contract.
Okay, good evening, board. On the first thing that's under Auxiliary Services is the Audit Contract for the 24-25 school year. You have a copy of it in front of you. There's one thing that was increased. There's a $1,000 increase in our audit contract this year due to the addition of Gatsby 101, when it talks about compensated absences. Our audit report that will be presented later in this year for the 24-25 year has to have that actually added to our audit report for all compensated absences. That's your annual leave, sick leave, and stuff of that sort. So there was an increase of $1,000 due to that. Other than that, everything's as it is.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Duttony? We need a motion to approve the Audit Contract as presented.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call in favor? All opposed? That contract is approved, Mr. Duttony.
Okay, thank you.
Next is your Budget Amendment.
Okay, Budget Amendments, you have them in front of you. These are through February of 2025 for all funds. There's a page for each fund. Just to start out with state funds, you'll see that there's, we start out at $72,69,069. Currently through February, we're actually amending the budget at 1.7 million, which ends up with $73 million for state funds as we're standing currently. Page two, and I'll just continue unless you want me to stop. Just, page two is our Local Current Expense Fund. There's not been much of a budget amendment to that. We were pretty much on target with what we created as a budget. I'm not saying that there won't be a budget amendment by time June, but you'll see currently right now it's just a $500 budget amendment, and that was due to a donation that we had for EC funds. So that still is a little over $16.8 million for local current expense budget. Page three and four is your Federal Grants Budget Amendment. We're actually amending total roughly about $114,000 to what we existently have at $10.6 million, ending up with roughly about $10.7 million on our table for federal funds. In that, of course, we had our remaining ESSR funds that was brought in until December 31st of 2024. That had to be spent, encumbered by September 30th of 2024. So that was a little, about $2 million total in that $10 million that was in, in the budget presentation. So I just want to let you know that when we start next year, as we're sitting right now, we do not have a $2 million to carry forward of ESSR funds that we can put in the budget for next year. Page five is your Capital Outlay Fund, roughly, budget amendment of roughly $1.1 million. Majority of that is a fund ballots appropriation for the new central office. So pretty much other than that is just small amounts, sales tax, state sales tax refund for capital outlay is, is in that as well. So that's, is $1.1 million budget amendment for capital outlay. The next page, Child Nutrition. There's not much of a budget amendment on that. We're still on target with what we're remaining, or what we presented originally for the budget on child nutrition. The amount that is added, $3.8 million, is the actual sales tax refund that child nutrition received from the 23, 24 school year. So that, that was not in the initial budget presentation of what, because at that time, we didn't know how much the sales tax was going to be. That was filed in September. And then on case, if you go to the last, which is Special Revenue, that's your Fund Eight. You'll see there's a roughly about a half a million dollar budget amendment there. That is the remaining of state sales tax. That is the restore grant remaining funds that had to be spent by September 30th. That was not in the initial budget. And then, of course, we had some go grants that the schools have wrote that come into, that we keep on top of at the central office level and not the school level. So that is majority of that budget amendment of the half a million dollars for, for Fund Eight. On the last page of the budget amendments, you'll see that roughly our budget, the budget amendment number one is $3.5 million that I'm bringing to you tonight for your approval to, with our amended budget being roughly $118 million, and that's through February of 2025.
Any questions for Mr. Duttony about budget amendment? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Budget amendments pass. Next, Mr. Duttony, your surplus items.
Okay, and there's a list that you should have of some surplus vehicles that we have, that we need to get rid of. Most, all of the vehicles on this list are either they're not functioning, they have mechanical, mechanical issues, they're not worth repairing, or they're not even, they're, they're non-reparable. So this is, will be put on our GovDeals account to be sold at public auction through govdeals.com. So we ask for that permission tonight to go forward with that.
So I entertain a motion to approve the surplus items for release as presented.
Send it.
All in favor? All opposed?
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Keith Benton with New Idea Quote.
Good afternoon, Board, or good night, sorry. Hey, so yesterday afternoon in our work session, we went through all the new idea furniture selections that we've put together for Indy Elementary Addition. I come to you tonight to approve that, to where we can move far with the purchasing of all the new equipment, furniture, and items of that sort for the new addition. If you got any questions?
Anyone having questions for Mr. Benton? If not, then I entertain a motion to approve the bid from New Idea. Sorry, Glenda.
No, no, I don't have, no, I'm just going to say I move to approve this.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the bid. It's for $284,432 from New Finish. Do I have a second? All those in favor? Those opposed?
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Benton. Next on the agenda is our Personnel Agenda. Ms. Lydia Hedrick.
Good evening, Board. This evening, Section One of your Personnel Agenda is simply for your information. It does not require any action. However, Section Two, I am requesting your approval with revisions.
I entertain a motion to approve Section Two with provisions as presented.
Move to approve Section Two with provisions as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hedrick. Next, we're going to go to comments. If any Board members have any comments they'd like to make? I know you do. Go ahead.
You know I got to. It wasn't in my prepared comments. I just want to thank Ms. Hedrick and Dr. Dennis and the central office staff. If you track our Personnel Agenda, we are doing so much better on retaining quality people and filling those slots especially. I got super excited about the oncoming sub-list because you know that's kind of close to my heart. Give me just a second. Real quick, my comments are about community. And everybody knows how I feel about community schools, but the power of our community schools has shown through lately. Several different winter sports teams from all four corners of the county went deep into the playoffs. As we speak, the Bulldogs, Lady Bulldogs are making a run to the state championship, and they are a beastly phenomenal team. That's, that's the power of our community schools. That being said, I have to do something like most likes, most spokes don't like to do. I have to admit that I was wrong about something very important. I have the ego the size of a spaceship, so it's hard for me to do this. But in November of 2021, during my board comments, I made a pledge to every single student Stanley County Schools. I basically guaranteed them all that when they entered the buildings of our respective schools, there would be someone there that loved them, several someones actually. Now, confession of erring does not mean I was wrong. It simply means I grossly underestimated just how loved our students were and are. Recently, we tragically lost a kind and joyful soul at South Stanley Middle. I was not really surprised by the outpouring of support, grief, and heartache on the part of South Stanley's community. That's how they roll out there. That's normal. What struck me later on, and on a very deep and personal level however, is the tremendous love, sheer and enduring love of the family of South Stanley and Stanley County Schools in general. We had, we had children from all four corners of the county paying tribute to this young man. It really, it really struck me deeply. Literally thousands of students were wearing blue on Friday. That was his favorite color. There were fundraisers held and moments of silence held across the county. For me, all this is a remarkable testimony to students, parents, and staffs of our Stanley County Schools. We are one community when tragedy strikes. We share, we share as one the heartbreak of loss of such a beautiful young man. So yes, I was partially right about the love that our children have for each other. I misjudged the depth and the breadth of it. I'm proud to be part of Stanley County Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Anyone else?
I would like to say something. I thought somebody, okay. Certainly, first of all, you know, congratulations to everyone that we recognized tonight. Dr. Dennis, Ms. Hedrick, whoever was responsible for those banners, you know, that our schools received. I've kind of been wanting to see that for quite a while now, but what was that, 17 out of 21?
Yeah, 17 out of 22, yes. One's a, a turn-in replacement, the other one's an online source there.
That's amazing, and I just applaud. I see some of our principals still here at this meeting. And, you know, I just thank you for all that you do. And I, and when you were up here receiving that, in my mind, what I was thinking was, wow, we got some mighty dang good teachers in Stanley County Schools. Because that's, that's who helps achieve that. It's your leadership as principals, but those teachers and their instruction. So, you know, please go back and share that at your schools because I, I know, I think every board member up here extremely proud, proud of what we were able to see tonight with the awarding of, of those banners. The other thing is, two things for me. I was able recently to, to ride a bus. I know February was, you know, we recognized our bus drivers and National Bus Recognition Appreciation Month. I always enjoy doing that, and it's, it's always interesting to see the routes that our bus drivers take and, you know, where our children live. It's always eye-opening for me, and I enjoyed that. And the other thing that is everyone on this board knows, there's nothing that gives me more pleasure than reading in a school. So Pete the Cat has definitely been on the prowl, and will continue to do so. But I love World Read Aloud, and I love Read Across America Week. And it's just when I get to be definitely in my element again of, of teaching, and I love that. And thank you, Mr. Plummer, for spelling B. Okay, winners. That's all I have.
Any other comments?
I can go next. I'll, I'll go next if you don't mind. Sorry. I just wanted to take a moment to express my condolences to the family at South Stanley Middle. I was out of town when I got that text, and that's never a message you want to get. And I know what those are like, getting as a board chair, and our hearts and thoughts are with that community and with that family. And then I wanted to say a special thank you to everybody that got awarded tonight. But there were two things that stood out to me when she was talking about Stanley Stars. And one of them was Mr. Eford for doubling up and taking extra classes, and the other was Ms. Kessagich. Did I? Kessagich? Kessagich for bus driving. And I wanted to take a moment to thank them both for that because both of those things are kind of above and beyond what we typically ask of teachers or, you know, staff. And so for someone to drive students to games or to field trips and that kind of thing, we really appreciate that because we are short drivers, and I know principals have a hard time finding those. And so I did want to mention those. And 17 out of 22 that met at Arc Cita Growth is amazing out of, you know, the amount of schools that we have. And so I'm just very proud of what our staff and students are doing on a daily basis, but also what Mr. Plummer and his staff are doing in curriculum and instruction and making sure that they have the materials and things that they need to do those things. So just thank you for all of that. And I too wanted to say that I had a great time at World Read Aloud Day. And I hope that I get to go to a school sometime this month and read. I think Locust has sent me an email, so maybe I'll get to get out there with my new job. I don't have as much leeway time as I did before, but I'm still going to try to make those work. May not be dressed up, but I'm going to try to make it work. So thank you.
You know you can be author.
Yes, I know.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin.
It's hard to compete with Mrs. Gibson. I've given up.
If you don't have a good costume and a wig, I'm not really sure.
Costume, a wig, and something to give to the students. So that's, that's the key. If there are no other comments, I'll, that's Dr. Dennis.
Thank you. I just have a few things I want to mention. As far as weeks, March 3rd through the 7th is National School Social Worker Week, for those who obviously are imperative for our, to our students in our school system. National School Breakfast Week, and of course, Read Across America Week. As far as days, March the 7th is Maintenance Worker Appreciation Day. Don't forget Daylight Savings Time on March the 9th, we'll still count Chitardi. And March 17th is St. Patrick's Day. And the month is our Music in Our Schools Month. And the only other things I'd like to say is I did, like Ms. Gibson said, and I, we cross paths in one school, enjoy reading with our schools. I was able to block out some time and go to our southern elementary schools, and it's always nice getting down there. It's nice getting everywhere, but to get to read to the students. And as mentioned before, just my thoughts and prayers with the family for our student who unfortunately passed away. Thank you.
Thank you, John Dennis. We appreciate all that you and your staff do. Our next board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April the 1st, April Fool's Day 2025, in the Jean McIntyre Room here at 6:15. At the end of that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All in favor? All opposed? We are adjourned.